So we'll just get started on, this is the truth in taxation hearing for the school district. And Mike had this working and now it's not. Alright, Mike, what'd you do? I can use this. So the information that we have to cover tonight legally for the truth in taxation, we have to give information on the background of school funding, on tax levies, and on budget. The information that we're going to talk about tonight is on taxes, proposed levy for the 2020 year, calendar year, and then information on the district budget, which we don't get into the budget a whole lot because of the way the tax levy works for the school districts, and I'll explain that as we go along. So what we're going to talk about tonight is taxes payable in 2020. So the school district levy, what this, the levy sheets are called, is the 2019 payable 2020 levy, which means the levy is approved in calendar year 2019, so the board following, following this hearing meeting, at the board meeting will approve the levy, and the taxes are paid in the calendar of year of 2020, but this is revenue for the school district for the following year, for 2021 or FY21. So this is different than how cities and counties do it. So cities and counties run on a calendar year, and their budget cycle is on a calendar year. So the school district budget lacks six months behind this, and I know this was always really confusing for a lot of people. So we're approving the levy, but it's not till our next school year that we'll get this revenue, but it's for taxes payable by the property owners in the calendar year of 2020, where your cities, townships, counties, they're approving their levy and they're approving their budgets all right now in December to get ready for the next calendar year. The levy process, as you know, is quite complicated, and there's not a lot of control that the local board has over the levy process because so much is determined and set by other entities. The county assessor, we were just talking about this earlier, they're the ones that are going to set your property values. The legislatures, they're the ones that determine the formulas that make up all your, the tax components and all the calculations that we use in the levy sheets. The county auditor then calculates what the tax capacity is for each of the different properties in the district. Then the legislators, again, they're the ones that set the levy limits. So for school districts, we have levy limits that we have to follow. We can't just automatically increase our levy to whatever would meet our needs. We have to follow the levy limits that are approved. Department of Education calculates what all those formulas would be. In September, the school board adopts that proposed levy, and then we verify numbers and tweak them as we need to correct things. And then the county auditor finally divides that tax levy up, and then the board approves the levy in December. So I want to go over a little bit the different types of levies and how that plays out and how it looks on your tax statements when you get them as a property owner. So we have two different voter-approved levies. Prior to our building project, we only have one voter-approved levy. But the two voter-approved levies that we have is the referendum for the operating levy, which we had in place before, but that was going to be expiring. So when we saw our numbers for our proposed levy, that number wasn't included because it had already, or was going to be expiring June 30th, which left us no levy authority. And that type of levy that's voter-approved is calculated off of the referendum market values, and I'll get into the different areas of the market values in a minute. The second voter-approved levy has to do with debt service. So our new building project was debt service levy, voter-approved, but that is calculated off of net tax capacity. So two huge different taxing components that go with voter-approved levies. And we'll get into the details on that. So when you get your tax statements, you always see the two lines, and I'll show you that. The other category besides the voter-approved is what they call the "other." So when you look at your tax statement, you'll see the "other" category. These are the different types of levies that fall into the "other" category. Now, the voter-approved levies, those dollar amounts are determined by the voters. You know, the board decides what they want to ask for, but the voters are the ones that are actually approving what those limits are. In the "other" category, all these are determined by the state legislator. So we can't, the board can't, the administration can't, we can't determine what these amounts are. They're all set by the legislators, and they're all based on formula calculations based off of the property values and our student enrollment. So these areas are the ones that fall into the "other," and we get this question quite often. You know, people see their tax statement, they call and says, "What the heck is in that 'other' category?" This is what falls into the "other" category. Operating capital, re-employment or unemployment, safe schools, career and technical, building leases, community service, and abatement bonds, which is our new parking lot. The other one is long-term facilities maintenance. Now, one more different calculation that we have to throw in here. These categories, as you can see, they're all spread on the net tax capacity of the district. The long-term facilities maintenance revenue is spread on what they call AEG modified net tax capacity. So even within the "other" category, there's a couple different funding formulas, a couple different property values that we look at to come up with what those funding totals are. So there's a number of different variables that affect increases and decreases in your property taxes, which you're well aware of. Changes in enrollment, changes in your assessed value and your property values, changes in the class rates, which is done by the legislator. Sometimes they increase a class rate for commercial business, for example. They might have a higher class rate. Changes when we have local levy versus state aid. Sometimes they switch to percent that's levy, sometimes it's aid. So you're still getting the same amount of money, but where it's coming from is different. We have our homestead credits, and the ones that I start here are kind of the key ones that are really happening that's affecting us right now. Of course, we got our building construction that affected our property taxes. We've got our new abatement bonds that we did for the parking lot, so that's a change for us. Our new operating referendum that was passed. The legislative changes with the LTFM, the long-term facilities maintenance, and now it's the AEG modified net tax capacity, that's been a change. And the AEG credit, now this AEG credit one, I just want to spend a little bit of time on because this is a, this really affects our district in a positive way. So what happened is, two years ago, they put in place what they call this legislation for AEG credit. And what happens is any of our debt, so the building project debt and the new abatement bond debt, is subject to this AEG credit. And this credit is paid through an open and standing appropriation that was set up by the legislators, which means that every year, there's money for that. It's not like the legislators have to turn around every year and decide if there's going to be money to fund this. So what happens is, in this year, because this is already in place, in the calendar year 2019, anybody that had AEG land saw a 40% credit on their taxes for the building bond debt, and we'll see it for the abatement bond as well. Now in 2020, that goes to 50%. So if they were before paying $100, for example, on their taxes for our building project, this next year, they're only going to pay $50 on that, and it's going to go to 55%, 60%, and then up to 70%. So for our district, a lot of the rural districts in Minnesota that have struggled to get building projects passed, this is a huge, huge benefit for helping some of those districts out. In your metro area that doesn't deal with AEG land, it's, you know, nonexistent, but for all the rural districts, this was, this was a great piece of legislation that is helping, helping our farmers out. So we're going to take a look quick at the different property values, and all this data is coming off our levy sheets. Forty pages now of the levy sheets. I think I've said this before, but when I started a few years ago, these were seven pages long. So lots of formulas, and I do have a couple copies. You can also find them on the Department of Education, but if you want one to take along, you know, it's just kind of interesting to see all the numbers that are on there. So I've just listed the market values that do show up on the levy calculations sheet, and you can see we just have a small increase, no, a small decrease on the 2018 market values over the 2017. So this first shot slide is the total value of the district, the total property values of the district. So that's, that's all the different properties in the district. And that's just a graph. Some people like to see the visual of how it looks when you graph it out. So same numbers, just showing it in a bar graph. Now, the second piece of information that we use is called the referendum market values. Now, this is the number that we use to calculate our operating referendum that was just passed by the voters. So this excludes all the AEG land, and it would exclude any seasonal property. So if you were in a district that had, you know, a number of lakes on it, or, you know, a larger lake, that if people had cabins on there that aren't homesteaded, they would be excluded from this as well. Now, if they live on the lake and that's their permanent residence, that it's homesteaded, they would pay the referendum tax, but not on, not on a seasonal cabin. And there it is on the bar graph. So you can see that one increased a little bit. Now, you start to look at those numbers and you're trying to think, okay, that was full property values, now it's referendum market values, we're taking off the AEG land. So that kind of tells you, oh, housing values must have increased a little bit to make up for the decrease in the total property values. The next calculation that we use, this one is the one that really, the number that we use that drives all the formulas, is called the net tax capacity, or the NTC. That was up a little bit, 2%. Now, this number, they take the market values, so the full market values of the district, times the class rates that are set by the legislators to come up with what those values are. There it is in the bar graph. The next one we do is the adjusted net tax capacity. And the adjusted net tax capacity is they're taking the net tax capacity of the district and dividing that by the sales ratio. And the sales ratio is, for the district, is determined by your coming assessors, and it has to do with what your property is valued at and what the, what your properties are actually selling at. Ideally, you of course want them to be 100%. Now, this year, we are at 96.1%, which is a pretty good percent. I think it was last year or the year before, we were at 100%. Yeah, last, two years, we were at 100%. So that basically is saying your assessor isn't assessing your property too high and you're not too low. You kind of want that to be close to 100% being assessed what it's selling for, when it comes to our case. Now, as a homeowner, of course, you want that a little difference. You want it assessed higher, and then you want to be able to sell it higher, or assessed lower, you know, however that works. The other piece that's on here then, that we use when we calculate the LTFM revenue, is the AEG modified. And that's pulling off for next year that 55% of AEG, so that decreases that number. The next piece of data that we have to use when we calculate all of these formulas is our pupil units, because you know pupil units for us is what drives our revenue. So this graph here shows you resident pupils over the last couple of years with our final numbers for June of last year, for the 1819 year. So we ended with resident pupils of 1,995, so up a little bit from the, from the previous year. This one is the average daily membership, which we also use this calculation. You can see when we did this last year, the number in black is what we were estimating at that time. The number is in red, is where we actually finished June 30th. This is always kind of key for me. I want it to either be higher or right on what we were guessing. In this case, we were higher, but you can see we were pretty close in most of our different grade levels. And then this is our projection right now, that we're the number that we're working with for the 1920 school year. So you see we're down a little bit as of right now in our pupil units. Now, I want to give you an example of how this kind of plays out when we look at a tax statement. So if you're a property owner, you would have received already in the mail your proposed tax statement. And I'm sure you've studied it pretty close, those of you that follow taxes and are, you know, part of this whole process. So the first thing that you're going to see in there is your estimated market value. And here, you can see this one has been increasing steadily over the last few years. And then you take off your homestead exclusion, so that gives you your taxable market value. And now here, your voter-approved levies. You can see what was paid last year and the proposed right now. Now, the big difference, if you looked on that proposed tax statement, you would have saw a little line on there that said, if you have a referendum election for your school that was approved at the November general election, the voter-approved tax for 2020 may be higher than the proposed. Because the county doesn't know, you know, at the time they're putting these together, if the referendum is going to pass or not, so they have to put that statement down there. So you can see then, this number is going to change. And then the other local levies, you can see, is up quite a bit. Big part of that has to do with the abatement bond that falls in here. So right now, this is showing a decrease in overall, this is school taxes, not city, not county, not townships. So this is just a snapshot then of what that same property tax statement looks like. So up on the top, you've got your, your values and how your property is classified, whether it's classified as homestead, non-homestead, and then your different areas. And that's what's always important. We get phone calls and, you know, people say, well, oh, my taxes went up this much, this much. And I'm like, are you looking at the school portion or are you looking at the overall? They kind of forget to, you know, bring out and really look at what's county, what's city, what might be special assessments. So this is the school, right here in this box, and that's where you see those two lines. And I know it's hard for you to see from there, but if you look on your copy, you'll see it. You know, the voter-approved levies and the other local levies. Again, that number is down because at this time, the operating levy had not been approved. So this statement then, when the real statement comes in the spring, you're going to see it updated and you're going to see an increase on that. Now, the second example that I've got here is the AEG land that the school owns, that are 48% off there. Estimated market value was up. There, you can see that AEG land credit. So last year was a credit of $96, next year it'll be $129. Voter-approved levies are dropped in this case. The other local levies are an increase, but an overall decrease. Now, in this case, because it's just AEG land, and this is very important, if you visit with anybody and they try to tell you they're not getting that AEG land credit, it is right on here, and it is called AEG land credit that you're seeing. So it shows up there in your property classifications along with your values. Now, in this example, this statement is going to be pretty true when it comes time for the school taxes next spring, when you get your statement, because AEG land is not taxed for the referendum. Okay, so if you get a property statement that's just strictly AEG land, because AEG land doesn't get taxed on referendums, this won't change. Or your residential is going to change because of that passage of the operating levy. So when we put all the property values together, and we put all the student data together, all the formulas, all the calculations, take the levy sheets, and we try to summarize that into one page versus the four pages. So I gave you a separate handout, so you could read that a little more clearer, a larger sheet. And you can see the different breakdowns, the different levy categories. I've got marked if it's based on, if it's taxed on referendum market value, voter-approved, or other categories, the net tax capacity, debt, so on and so on. So right now, when we look at these numbers, you'll see on that, that single sheet that you have, what was actually payable in 2019 and the proposed levy in 2020. So because of our abatement bond, which was an increase, and then an increase, a slight increase in our referendum, we're looking at a 17.31% proposed increase, which is extreme. Sounds really high compared to what we've had in the, in the last couple of years, but we can explain the reasons why we've had them. So I'm going to go through each of the categories a little bit to explain where those differences show up. So the first one is the voter-approved operating levy, the referendum. Now, there's a number of different categories that fall into the referendum, even though, you know, we vote on the referendum. But within that whole category, we have the referendum dollars, equity dollars, local optional dollars, and transition dollars. So it's kind of all lumped together when it's time, it's time for the levy sheet. So we currently have what was voter-approved at $460, and the local optional revenue now is $724. So it was the $424, and then that $300 by legislation got moved into the local optional and not part of your referendum anymore. And the adjustments are made on the levy sheets for your prior years to get that all squared up. Because when we do the proposed, all the estimates are based on our guess of what we think our pupil units might be. The other thing on the property values, when this is all put together, they're calculating, the formula is using the 2018 property values. When you get your taxes, it'll actually be recalculated and they will use the 2019 numbers. But at the time this is done, they don't have that information from the state auditor's office. So it does change a little bit from the 18 to 19. The operating capital levy, we have a small decrease in that, again, based on some adjustments between what was estimated for pupil units and what actual was. So we actually got a little decrease there of $5,200. And I put together just an example to show you, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but you can kind of read through it on your own of how some of these formulas are calculated. So operating capital, they take first a look at what your building age is. And this was a big change for us when we did our building project, because now we, before we had older buildings, when you come in Helen Baker, and now you take that off the, off the list and you add in a new building, your building age drops quite a bit. So they need to come up with a facilities age index. So they're taking a .01 plus one of your building age to come up with a 1.3428 in our case. So the operating capital, what the formula allowance is, is your facilities age index times $79 plus $109. So our operating capital allowance per pupil unit is $225. So we're taking our total pupil units estimated for 2021 times our allowance in our operating capital revenues, $392,000, that's before any adjustments. So from there, you have to figure out how much is state aid and how much is local levy. And they have a threshold set in there of a capitalization amount. So our, again, our operating revenue is $392,000, our estimated pupil units is 1741. That's where they pull in then our 2018 adjusted net tax capacity of $15 million. And now we divide out that by your pupil units to know how much we're getting for adjusted pupil unit. In our case, it's $8,842. So to figure out the levy ratio, the threshold for the state is 23,000, so we're dividing our adjusted net, adjusted pupil unit by their capitalization, and we come up with a .37. So that's what our levy limit is. So that's kind of how that calculation is figured, and that's our levy. And then the difference between that becomes the state aid. So it's a little complicated, but I just wanted to see an example of what we go through when we do the levy sheets to come up with how you figure out how much is levy and how much is state aid. The unemployment is a little bit of an increase. We have a little higher unemployment that we've paid out. That is based on what you estimate, you think, what your unemployment might be, and then they adjust it for what your actual expenses were for FY18, and that is all local levy. The safe schools is taxed on your net tax capacity with a change of $2,300 here, so not, not much of a change. And again, that's based off of your pupil units times your net tax capacity times $36 per pupil unit. We use that money for, like it's listed, a number of different things, but anything that you in your mind think that keeps the school safe. So it could be a school resource officer, school crossing guards, radio, any type of security is what we focus that dollars on. Career and technical, again, based on net tax capacity, and this is a small decrease. And here, they take a look at your estimate, what you think your program is going to cost for the year, and you get 35% of what that estimate is. But if your number drops, you are, you do have a guaranteed revenue of what the previous year was. So ours was a little less this year based on the step in that is now in place. We have a guaranteed revenue of $72,000, but it was a small decrease for us. Long-term facilities maintenance, a few different requirements for this. This is the money that's been in place, like I said, for a couple of years since 2016. It's levy and aid, or some of the categories are strictly just levy. It says levy and aid. You have to submit a tenure plan to the Department of Education, so every July, August, right in there, the board has to approve that plan. I work with the facilities committee on developing that plan. It's basically looking at all your projects. So long-term facilities maintenance, part of that is health and safety, and any type of deferred maintenance project that you have for your district. So it could be carpeting, it could be ceilings, it could be bathroom remodels, sidewalk repairs. And we have a list that goes on and on and on if you ever want to see it. So that's funded now based at $380 per pupil unit. And this is just, again, the same, walks you through kind of the same calculation of how we come up with the, the long-term facilities maintenance revenue. So the difference here in this revenue, like I mentioned, this is based off of AEG modified. So the AEG modified figure comes about on this formula only. The AEG land is reduced by 50%. So when they're doing those calculations to come up with what our total AEG land adjusted modified, adjusted net tax capacity that's modified for AEG land, that's reduced by 50%. So again, your AEG land is not paying for all of your facility upgrades that you're doing. That was some legislation that, that came into place a couple of years ago as well, kind of as a tax break for our AEG owners. This is our lease levy, and here we have a slight change in this this year, and I'm going to explain that to you. So in the past, the only thing that we had that fell into the lease levy category was our early childhood building center that we put on. And we had a tenure lease on that, and that will expire shortly here now in 2023. And the lease levy for that was $160,000, so that's the amount that we levy each year to pay off the debt for that building. The addition we have to that this year has to do with our Cosmos Learning Center, which is part of the Southwest West Central Service Cooperative, where we send occasionally some special ed students to that facility. In the past, our bill from that, from the co-op, because that is staffed by the service cooperative people, they have to pay a lease agreement to whatever school, and, you know, we, we utilize Cosmos, but they also have learning facilities in Bellevue, in Wilmer, in Worthington. Of course, what am I missing? Bellevue, Wilmer, Cosmos?
Is there something in Marshall?
I think there's four, but I, so they, you know, kind of, you know, throughout southern Minnesota, they have these buildings, these learning facilities where we can send special ed students when we can no longer service them in our district. So in the past, our cost for those students that we pay to attend there, the lease portion of that building is built into the tuition billing costs for those students. And then we get that back. It's an adjustment to our state special levy that comes through. Well, what MBE is now allowing school districts to do is add on, if you choose to, a lease levy that covers that portion of your bill. Now, for this year, because this is for 2021, we're going to continue to see that built into our, our billing, our tuition billing, because we had no lease levy authority prior to that, and this is for the following year. So we have the option, if we want to, to add on the $17,000 in our lease levy to help cover some of those costs that we utilize by sending students to that Cosmos Learning Center. So we, again, we had no levy authority for that. This year, we're still paying for it. This is just a way for some school districts to offset some of those costs and to help with your special ed costs. So we can talk about that a little bit when I get to the summary, whether we want to choose to levy or not levy for that. Now, we have two different types of long-term debt. One is voter-approved and one is non-voter-approved. The first one, as you know, was our voter-approved, was our building project. The levy authority, $1,411,000, this is a decrease of $50,000. And you're maybe going, whoa, are we going to pay our, our debt bill when it comes through? If you remember, when we do our, our bond, our levy for the, the building project, we are required by law to levy 105%. Not just, you know, here's, here's the bill, here's what we Not just, you know, here's, here's the bill, here's what we have to pay, you should be able to pay it, right? We don't know if somebody else there is going to say, I'm not paying my taxes this year. I'm at the county and I'm disputing what they're charging me, so I'm not paying, and it goes into a court battle. Therefore, we're not getting our tax money that we need from them to pay our building debt. So the legislator says you need to levy 105% to make sure you have enough money to pay that, to pay your bill. Once you get to so many years, they start looking at how much your fund balance has increased in that category and say, okay, you've got enough built in and reserved that we can start giving some of that back to the taxpayers now. We don't need to keep collecting that. So we need to have about an $80,000 window, a budget reserved, to pay off the building debt every year that it comes due. So this year, we had a decrease of $50,000 because we were beyond that. We were at about $135,000. This year, in our fund balance in our debt service, we had at $245,000. So next year, we're going to see an even bigger decrease in that, in that category unless we have, probably here, unless we have a number of people that haven't paid their taxes or, you know, some other situation. So that's a good thing. That's kind of a way, nice way to, okay, we're giving it back to the taxpayers because we don't need it. The other category in the debt is the non-voter-approved, and this is what the board had approved as a way to get our parking lot taken care of, both here and at Silver Lake. It was a tenure abatement bond. That's going to increase our taxes $147,000 for 10 years. It was a way for us to get it done and get the project funded and move on with that. Our community ed, all the areas that fall into community ed is regular community ed, our school readiness, ECFE, our non-public, our preschool screening, and our PAC program, our school age care program. Those all fall within fund four. They're all part of community service. Slight change there, it's only an increase of $1,500. And again, here's a chart calculation that shows you in this example how the ECFE calculation is done and how it breaks out between the levy and the state aid. So just information again, if you read through that and have questions on how it's calculated, please give me a call, and I won't go through it line by line. There's some snapshots of our young learners there having some fun. So here's just a summary, back to page 10, of what the levy history looks like, and you can kind of see over the years the ebb and flows and, you know, we're, we've built that up there quite a bit because of our building project and our abatement project. Now, just a little bit about the school budget. As you know, or you might be aware of, school district budgets are divided into a number of different funds that we work with. We've got our general fund, which includes transportation and capital expenditures. Years back, those used to be separate funds. Transportation used to be a fund three, capital used to be a fund five. Those got rolled into the general fund back in the 90s. We have a food service fund, our community service fund, debt service fund, building construction. We have a trust fund, scholarship fund. We had an internal service fund that got closed out in June 30th, and then all of our student activity funds. Here's a slide, a chart that shows you our actual 2019, so our last year's expenditures and revenues with the fund balances, and then our proposed budget. Now, this is the proposed budget that the board approved back in June. We have not looked at a revised budget that, so far this year. I've been working on that. I have the revenues about done, but again, that changes as we look at our enrollments for the revenues and then our expenditure side. But you can see, we're very healthy, which is a good thing. We ended at our general fund at about a 23% fund balance. Our policy is 20%. So very healthy in that general fund, along with the rest of our food service, community service, our debt service, we're all, all our funds are extremely healthy. Building construction is the one that, you know, has been up and down as we paid off our debt, and now the money that we had sitting in there just had to do with the parking lot because we got that money back in June, and we're just finishing paying off those bills now as the project is completed. This is just a pie chart that shows you how much is focused in the general fund compared to our other funds. You know, your general fund is your, that's your main bucket of money, both on your revenues and expenditures. So we've got the revenues and then the expenditure slide, so it's about the same on both of them. Again, it's strewn a little bit because of your debt service or in your construction fund. So what makes up for changes in our budget? You know, you would hope sometimes when you set a budget that, okay, we're good to go for the year, we shouldn't have to make any adjustments, we thought we knew what we were doing. Well, there's always a number of things that play into a school district budget, especially when you're doing it back in June, you haven't completed your staffing, you don't know what your enrollment is, you don't know what some projects are going to be. So a number of changes fall into that. Staffing, contract settlements, you know, we estimate what we think our contracts are going to settle at. We finished, didn't finish teachers till the first part of September, and then we're working on a few other contracts yet. So kind of need all those to finalize before you can finalize what that staffing and benefits budget looks like. Transportation, when we're back in June, we don't know how many special ed kids we're going to be transporting. We don't know if they're going to add an additional route. All those things play into it. Utilities, you do your best guess based on previous year's usage on some of those utilities. Snow removal is always a throw in the dirt and see where you end up. Special ed, again, we don't know what needs we're going to have for students that come in during the year. Technology, we're not having much changes this year because I didn't give them a lot of money, sorry, Mike, to work with. But we're doing okay in the technology. And then we had our parking lot that got added in there, and then our adjustment that we always have to make in general education and our special education revenue, and of course, in our enrollment. So the one thing I want to mention that, you know, affects our general ed is what we call the cross, the special ed cross subsidy bucket that you've heard us talk about in the past. You know, we have a responsibility to educate every child in the district, and every child that comes into us, comes to us as a regular ed student, as Mr. Butler refers to many times, or a regular ed student first. And we need to meet those needs of every student. But we end up spending a lot of extra general fund dollars to cover our special ed costs because it's not funded from the state and the federal government like it should be. So for, I don't have last year's final numbers yet, but for FY '18, our cross subsidy amount was $1.8 billion. That means we're taking $1.8 billion from our general fund and helping cover our special ed costs. So that's a lot of money that you're trying to offset some of your regular programs to make sure that you're covering the needs of the special ed programs. Now, last year, our expenses were down a little bit because we had some reduced transportation costs. But that's a, you know, that's a sizable amount of money that would be nice to have from the state and federal government to help the districts. And I think if districts had some of that, we wouldn't be asking the voters all the time for so much, or we'd be able to do a few more things, like technology, like curriculum, like some staffing situations that come about. So it does, it affects us a lot, so we have to make sure that those needs are met. So just to summarize then, everything that we've talked about. Again, right now, the proposed levy is at $4,314,557.08, a 17.31% increase. If the board at the meeting tonight decides they want to under-levy that amount for the Cosmos lease levy, that would be $17,645. It would drop the percent increase to a 16.83%. So it drops it a little bit to a total of, you know, $4,296,912.8. It's not a substantial difference when you take $17,000 and spread it amongst all of our taxpayers. I think the normal regular taxpayer probably wouldn't see about a couple bucks difference after you spread that out on your property values of $15 billion. But that will be a board decision as we discuss it at the board meeting, or we can, you know, take questions on that now as well. I would recommend it at this point, just based on kind of what I just told you about our cross subsidy expenses. This is a way for us to get a little bit additional dollars to help with offset some of those expenses. I understand it's, you know, it is an additional increase on the levy, but we're going to have to pay it to the region regardless. So it does help offset some of that when we're already looking at a high cross subsidy for us. So, questions? I can go back to any of the slides if you have a particular question, if you're looking at a tax statement or a different formula calculation, or questions on just a specific area.
I have one. It's on page 17. We were talking about the pay opportunity training center. Is that the one that is all under here?
Nope, that's the one that's on the north side of the Lincoln Building.
Okay, so that's the newer one.
Yep. So when we, oh, my page numbers are different, sorry. When the, back in 2011, when we voted on the building project two times, remember it failed back in 2011? Then we had a board discussion, work sessions, couple of them. We were out of room in Helen Baker, and we were trying to figure out how we could address that. In our original building project design, it included that addition as part of the project. The bowl went down, we still had to address that. We came up with this funding mechanism to be able to build that, to get those kids in that facility to free up space at Helen Baker. So that gave us those few years ahead of when we got the building project passed. Because we didn't know at that time when we were going to bring it back to the voters approval, when it would get passed and when it would get completed. So it gave us, you know, we put that up in 13, 2013?
Right.
So it gave us four years ahead of this building project, where I don't know where we would have went with those kids at Helen Baker because of our space issues over there.
We just kept the vision of ultimately having all of our youngest learners together, and eventually, thankfully, it did pass in 2015.
So we could have held off, you know, let's say, oh, we'll squeeze them in at Helen Baker, and the program won't be able to grow because we don't have any space for it. We went from probably 25, 30 kids in that program, and we're up now, I think for her last report, she had 101 in that. And that's the three, four, five-year-olds that maybe are in kindergarten yet. They run morning program, afternoon program, some are three days a week, some are four days a week. So they tripled the size of that program because we have the space to accommodate them.
The reason I ask that is, because I know at one time when the old really traveled center was built, if it closed before a contract with the state was up, they had to repay some. Did that ever happen?
No, we did not have to pay that. When we first built it, as long as we were continuing to use it as a learning facility, which we were at Helen Baker, they were fine with that. And then when we were selling the building, we had to work through a little logistics with it. We'd explained to them that we were still utilizing, we still had a learning, learning program for those students, that we were within a year of that language expiring, so we were able to do that without paying anything back. Took us a little bit, but we, we got through it.
Yeah, there was lots of conversations with the state, but in the end, they basically gave us permission where we didn't have to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to dominate here. Would you explain what are the biggest reasons for the 17.31% increase? I want to make sure I have a statement.
Yep. So the first one would be the parking lot. So if you look at that, look at that single page on that summary sheet. And if you kind of follow through each of the categories and look at what your actual was last year and what the proposed was for this year. So if you look at the line that says total RMB, which is referendum market value, last year, and this includes equity, local optional, and transition, and then your regular referendum. So you can see just the regular referendum, because of the voters approving to increase that $283, it increases the levy about $157,000. The rest of that piece will come in state aid. And then when you add in your, equity is actually a decrease because your equity works as a balance off of your referendum. So if your referendum is real low, you can hire equity running. When your referendum goes higher, you get less equity. That's the piece that they use to kind of balance out between districts that have a smaller referendum. And then your local optional, you can see the big increase rate there, and that's because the state moved that $300 to local optional. So before it was the $424, now it's $724. So the one part of the levy then has to do with those categories, that's an increase of $341,000. You see very little change, I shouldn't say very little change, the LTFM is up a little bit in that category, but then the other one is down here on the abatement bond. Decreased actually a $50,000 that we talked about on the building bond because of the tax credit coming back, and then $150,000 onto your parking lot. So overall increase is $636,000 from the previous year. Does that help if you look at that single sheet? Yep.
I guess my concern is, as a retired guy on the fix city, I'm looking at a 7.5% increase in city, I'm looking at an 8.9% increase in county, and now I'm looking at a 17.31% increase in school level. Somewhere along the lines of what's here.
Now, when I looked at mine, and this is calling every, every taxi jurisdiction, I've got an increased total of 6.4%.
I have 28%.
So did your, you said before, your market values went up quite a bit?
Oh, they skyrocketed. And not only that, with the homestead exclusion, because the values went down, so you got to double it. Now, you know, I think what you need to do is get the big picture in here, you know, you gotta, you gotta see this impact, tax impact of all the increases on what that, on product, not just the school, not just the city, not, tie them all together, and then you get the real impact.
Yep, you do. And like I say, mine, everybody's 6.4. Now, that doesn't include the referendum, but I know based on our calculations for my valued property, my taxes are going to go up 59, 60 bucks. So it's not going to change my percent too much. Some of the A land, you're not going to see much of a change from what the proposed is because of that A credit. So it's really hard to compare property to property when assessed values change.
Well, yeah, I kind of understand that. But I'm looking at mine alone, and I'm not alone with my app, because I thought that was a big similar thing.
Were their market, their assessed values gone up?
Yes. And that's what, that's what can irritate me because they can arbitrarily increase your property value for no real fair reason, other than somebody had locked in Silver House, High Products, or the city house. I find that extremely unfair. I mean, if you're making improvements, that's one thing. But if you aren't making improvements, and your value goes up, in my case, $21,000 for doing nothing, I find that really hard to swallow.
And I don't have a good answer for that because that's accessor.
I didn't, that, that.
Yeah, you can, yeah, I'm, I'm used to that, but you can bet.
I thought you accessor and it's like, should have paid attention back in the spring with the initial, you know, tax. Well, nobody pays attention to that, especially when the December gives, like, I need someone.
And then when you get it in the spring, you really pay attention when the tax bill actually comes.
And it does make you, it's not that change.
You know, I think our board has been very conscious of what the tax increases are. If you look back at the history, we've under-levy as many And if you look back at the history, we've under-levy as many years as we could to help taxpayers out. We make sure that we don't affect a category that isn't going to hurt us in state aid. And so many of the categories now, we are getting state aid. For a while, there was a lot that was just levy, and then you could look at, okay, can we live without this? We've kind of gotten to the point where there isn't a lot that we can't live without, and a lot of that has to do with that cross subsidy and special ed that we have to pay for. So we're kind of stuck sometimes on what we can do to make it work.
I can say, it's been.
I'm okay with that.
I feel that.
Okay.
Someone, I had a lot of conversations in the last six months on the same subject that you had. And one of the persons told me that valuation that they put there says value is only good if you have any intention of selling your property.
Absolutely.
If you're not intelligent, have any intention of selling your property, it doesn't mean anything. You know what I mean?
Bottom line it does.
Bottom line it does, but you know what I mean? So, but I've had a lot of conversations on that subject that more generally deals with the retired people who are living in town, you know, within the city of property, Brompton and Blackpool. Because they have the, what is it, 20%? They can, you know, like where you live there.
Nine, 10, 20.
But I mean, they can levy 20% of the project of your square footage, of your footage in front of your property to your, the city can.
Oh, yeah, I, the city don't really pay.
So was some of your increase because of the street assessors? Nothing because of the street?
I specifically asked the assessor on that, and it doesn't do it. I thought it did.
Yeah.
No, it's just an arbitrary figure to make. Okay, your property's worth $20,000.
My one, $5,000.
I got to move to your neighborhood.
You should, it's the next thing. I have lots of squirrels, too.
I didn't bring them along.
No. So that is interesting, you don't, when it goes up that much, then.
We're talking, we'll give you some life traps, and you can take them over to the show.
No, please don't.
Well, I lower my angle.
You know, you never know.
Maybe your blood pressure, or not. Michelle, I would want to thank you for your presentation and the work that you put into this, prior, during, and of course, after. And this was very, very well done as far as putting it into a digestible and, you know, a document and a presentation that is explainable and takes so much and tries to streamline it into something that makes sense. A quick question that I have for you on, it's page 14 of the PAC, and it's page 28 as far as the slide may be. And when you were explaining very well the operating capital revenue and the formula that they use, you mentioned the average building age. And you were mentioning how Helen Baker being taken off as an older facility within the district, being replaced by the square footage of the new facility. With that formula, do they, the formula creators, do they look at, say, a Lincoln, which is 1963, and a high school, which is a 1970? And yes, that's when it was constructed. However, when remodels are done or upgrades are done to those facilities, does that factor in, or how does that factor into the average building age when it's still a 1963, that's still a 1970, but upgrades have been made to it?
They do not look at upgrades at all, unlike the assessor. It strictly goes by the year it was built, and it takes all of your buildings combined. So it's taking Lakeside, Lincoln,
An average.
Field House, averages, and all to come up from that. So we used to be like a 50-plus building average age until we got rid of Helen Baker and put the new in, then it dropped. And if you look at that closely when you're studying, I know you will, studying those calculations, there's a little difference in the building age calculation between operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance, when you look at those. One of them includes administrative office areas, and the other one doesn't. That's a change that was made, that you can include administrative areas in your LT, I think it's LTFM. You can in your operating capital because you still would have building needs where your administration is housed, but you can't use your LTFM for that only operating capital.
And are they referring to district office as administrative?
So we've only got, for us, because we're part of the building, we've only got like 5,000 square feet that we assign to district office. Some districts have a whole separate building, like in Hutchinson, they've got their own separate building that is administrative district offices. So then you have to exclude all that. So they look at all of those separately. Thank you.